Okay, I think we're ready to get started. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, Mayor Mays.
Welcome everyone to the February fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two special Valentine's Day edition of the City Council meeting. Happy Valentine's Day to everyone. And with that, I'd like to ask the city clerk to please call the roll.
Counselor Long?
Here.
Counselor McLaughlin?
Present.
Counselor Runyon?
Present.
Counselor Randall?
Present.
Counselor Richardson? I'm admitting him. And Mayor Mays?
I am present. Is Counselor Richardson with us?
Should be.
Um, I don't see him. Oh, there he is. Okay, we're ready to go. Item four is approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Well, did we want to do the pledge of allegiance, Mayor Mays?
Yes, we do want to do the pledge of allegiance. Thank you for pointing that out, Counselor McLaughlin. And with that, I would like to ask you to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
Would you stand and join me? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Counselor. And now, item four, approval of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move approval of the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Counselor Long.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by Counselor Long and seconded by Counselor Randall to approve the agenda. There's any discussion. Those in favor of the motion, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye, McLaughlin.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Uh, before we get to item five, I would like to say a few words about two city residents who passed away recently. Citizens who were quite involved with the Dallas community and will be missed. I'm talking about Doug Leish and John Frederick. Doug Leish was a resident of the Dallas since nineteen sixty-two. He taught at the Dallas High School for thirty-two years. He loved and appreciated art and created many wonderful works of art himself. He was very involved with the preservation of the old Saint Peter's landmark, not only in the preservation, but also in the fixing, repairing, and beautifying this community treasure. And Doug also served on the community, on the city's Historic Landmark Commission for many years. John Frederick, John was a member of the city's Urban Renewal Board of Directors. He was also instrumental in the founding of the Dallas High School Booster Club and kept score at many of the community sporting events, namely football and basketball, and was also an active participant in the community meals program. Both Doug and John will be missed and also appreciated for all they did for our, from our community.
You're here.
Okay, item five, presentations and proclamations. With us, we have Kenny LaPointe, who is the Director of the Mid-Columbia Community Action Council to give a presentation. Um, with that, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. LaPointe. There he is. I think you're, uh, the city clerk will unmute you, Kenny.
There we go. Good evening, Mayor Mays, members of the Dallas City Council. Uh, my name is Kenny LaPointe. I'm the Executive Director of Mid-Columbia Community Action Council. I am here this evening to provide you with a presentation, um, to go over some of the work that we have been doing as an agency in the community and also talk about the Navigation Center. So with that, I'm gonna just share my screen. So I'm gonna kind of skip over a few of these slides that I think you've probably seen before and focus on sort of the critical ones, um, as we move through here. Um, so I wanted to remind folks who we are. Mid-Columbia Community Action, um, is your community action agency. Uh, we serve Hood River, Wasco, and Sherman Counties, and we do that, um, by providing housing, shelter, household utility, and home weatherization assistance to low-income and houseless community members. And our primary, our primary funding comes from state and federal sources, but we're also funded, um, locally in some ways. Our mission is to build a better future for our community through partnership and equity-centered programs that prevent and eliminate poverty and houselessness. So before I get into sort of the heart of the presentation on the Navigation Center, I wanted to give you all an overview of the work that we've done, um, over the past year, uh, the work that we did in two thousand twenty-one. So in two thousand twenty-one, we were able to provide over four million dollars in direct client assistance to over four thousand community members across our three-county service territory. Um, with an, with a majority of the services going to Wasco County. Um, that, that dollar figure is an increase, um, from about two and a half million in the year twenty-twenty. So we were able to increase the amount of resources that came into the community. I'd like to remind folks that a lot of these funds went to local businesses, went to local landlords, and really helped to infuse the economy. In some cases, I would say, you know, we helped, we helped hotels that may have been struggling during COVID nineteen, and we also helped landlords that may have been struggling to, um, to get rent, uh, because we were able to pay rent on behalf of many households throughout the region. Um, we updated our website, um, which means a lot to me. Um, it's a, it's a very nice website compared to what we had before. It's much more usable. It's, um, got great language access and, um, it's got some good functionality on it as far as being able to apply for resources online, um, which is something we didn't have in place before. We were all paper before, so folks had to really come to our door or have access to a fax machine, which I didn't even know existed anymore. So we are super happy that we, um, have been able to improve our ability for folks to apply. We, um, invested over six million dollars into our communities. I mentioned the four million dollars in services provided. That's six million dollars. It's talking about the staffing and, um, the support that we provided to our own team. So we went from a staff of nine in two thousand twenty to, we're, we're approaching twenty-seven people right now. So we've really increased the number, and that's full-time staff. We're really increasing the number of folks on our team, um, that are, you know, able to live and work in the same community, um, and we're paying them living wages. So, um, this is a, a big deal for us because this is also reinvesting in the community. Through our weatherization and utility programs, we served two thousand seven hundred thirteen people. Forty-six point four percent of those participants were native, people of color, or Latinx community members. We were also able to weatherize seventeen homes. Weatherization resources, um, are much smaller and our projects are much larger. So the average weatherization of a home is around twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars. In addition, with our housing programs, last year, we were able to serve thirteen hundred households with housing assistance to ensure that they don't experience homelessness or that we're able to, um, end homelessness for them. Uh, we were able to provide four hundred eighty-eight households with rent assistance through a partnership with the Mid-Columbia Housing Authority. That prevented eviction for those, uh, families. And that was nearly a million dollars in rent assistance paid to local landlords to prevent eviction and financial disruption to the economy. On the shelter side of things, um, we really increased the number of shelter nights largely thanks to, uh, the City Council, the City of Dallas, uh, for all their advocacy and, and work to ensure that the Dallas shelter, um, was able to stay where it is and also increase in size. Uh, we went from in two thousand twenty of having around six, seven thousand shelter bed nights available in the three-county region to this, uh, in two thousand twenty-one, we had nearly twenty-one thousand hotel or shelter bed nights, um, throughout the three-county area. In our Dallas shelter facility, we were also able to transition twenty-one of those shelter clients into permanent housing. So we served eighty-one folks throughout the year in two thousand twenty-one, but we transitioned twenty-one of them into permanent housing. So that's a big success. And also really worth noting is, um, the fact that the, the shelter model that we utilize, the non-congregate shelter model, was really set up to prevent and mitigate the impacts of COVID nineteen. Um, we, we did so by holding multiple vaccination clinics. We tested folks frequently, um, to ensure that they weren't contracting COVID, and if they did, we could prevent it from spreading further. But, um, I'm happy to report that we didn't have a single person who tested positive for COVID nineteen in two thousand twenty-one, even though there was, um, some significant, especially at the end of twenty-one, there was some significant outbreaks, um, of COVID nineteen. I also just want to mention our veteran program. So we served eighteen veteran households. We're increasing that program size. This year, we've added an additional case manager, which means we can serve eighteen to twenty more folks. Um, we were able to place five veteran households into permanent housing and prevented eviction for three of them. Uh, many of you know that we also own the Hamilton Apartments or formerly the Hamilton Hotel. Um, that property has been fully occupied and serves ten veteran families there. So the next sort of aspect of the work that we're doing, um, which is sort of if I go back here, is our future. So part of the future of Mid-Columbia Community Action is the Dallas Navigation Center, which is why I'm here to talk to you tonight. So many of you know that we received one point five million dollars from the Oregon Legislature in two thousand twenty-one through House Bill five thousand six, coined the Christmas tree bill. Um, that funding was really the kickoff for us to, uh, think about and envision what it might look like to have a, a navigation center in the Dallas. Now, I'll, I'll answer the question of what is the Navigation Center, since you're all wondering this. A navigation center, the way we've defined it is a, an, it's a shelter that has multiple agency offices co-located in one site, with those agencies' offices supporting the service needs of folks experiencing poverty or houselessness, including those who are residing in our shelter. So we're in some ways creating a one-stop shop for folks where they're not having to run all over the community to access an array of different services. We're putting all those services into one place to create ease of use and access for them, and also to better address the needs of the folks who are living in our shelter. The agencies that, um, we're currently working with, and I will note that this is all tentative, but they've been all involved in the planning process. Um, as we get further down the road, we'll start nailing down agreements on who all is going to be in the building, but we do have some fairly firm commitments from the next door. The Mid-Columbia Housing Authority, the Oregon Human Development Corporation, will be actually moving its Dallas offices into our office, and they specialize in serving agricultural workers and the Latinx population. Bridges to Health, uh, which is a program of the Columbia Gorge Health Council, the Mid-Columbia Center for Living, which I will just flag and note that the partnership between Mid-Columbia Community Action and the Mid-Columbia Center for Living, and it is an incredibly important one. The services provided with Mid-Columbia Center for Living married up with the Shelter and Housing Case Management Services provided at Mid-Columbia Community Action are a tool and key, they're very key to the success of the folks that we are going to be serving at the Navigation Center and is key to the success of the folks that we're serving at the current shelter site. We also have One Community Health. Um, our federally qualified health clinic will be providing physical health services as well as telehealth, physical health, and behavioral health services at the Navigation Center. I mentioned the Columbia Gorge Health Council. Um, and then Niche Wana Housing, which is, um, an agency that works with native community members who are living along the river. Uh, many of them at the Inlu sites. Niche Wana Housing helps connect native community members to the resources that we're providing, um, at Mid-Columbia Community Action and through our partner agency. So I kind of talked about the vision of the Navigation Center as a one-stop shop. Um, it's really to bring all the services, um, underneath one roof, um, where we can provide them easier for clients. If you can just imagine a client experience, you walk in the door to receive services, you have multiple agencies in a building, you meet with one case manager. Um, that case, case manager recognizes that you have the need to, um, get some behavioral health services, walks across the hall, connects with that behavioral health provider, and hands that person off to the behavioral health provider to then assess their behavioral health needs. I'll talk more about sort of the project overlay and, and some of the things that we're gonna tie into the project, which will actually have even more of an impact, um, than just, um, resource service connection. So right now, we've come a long way since we started, um, working on this project. Um, we've identified our, our core project team, which is the Housing Development Center. They do housing, um, affordable housing development across the state as well as social service facilities development. We also are working with Access Architecture, which is a, a business owned by, um, the minority-owned business, um, out of the Vancouver area. And then we're working with Bremic Construction as our general contractor. Many of you are probably familiar with Bremic. They have a, a presence in the region. They've done, um, anything from the Community College to One Community Health Building to the Duffer School. Um, those are all projects, which I'll show you in a minute, that Bremic Construction has done. We also selected them because they have a lot of subcontractors in the region. And one of the core values as identified below is that we are able to, um, continue to reinvest in the community through the subcontractor selection process, um, as well as selecting businesses owned by veterans, women, native community members, Latinx community members, and people of color. We're also, as we work through the design process, um, we're emphasizing a trauma-informed and equity-centered design. So how we lay out spaces is gonna be really important in how people feel when they come into those spaces, and we're very attentive to that. That's something that Access Architecture has very good experience in. So we've been working again with, with our program partners, um, working on programming. We've had a number of sessions, um, with all of our program partners to talk about the core values of the spaces that we're building out. As we've met with them and brainstormed that in conjunction with our development consultants, these five things below are the, the top needs that were identified from, um, our program partners, and I will note that this also included, people with lived experience of homelessness. So we incorporated them into the process and actually have had them in, um, our program, programming meetings each time. So a community space for large gatherings and meetings was identified as a huge, um, community need, as well as a career resource center and computer lab where people can apply for jobs and, um, and work on resume building. Having classroom spaces where we could teach things like ready-to-rent courses, financial management and budgeting, um, as well as giving folks opportunities to, um, go back and get their GED or, um, go to post-secondary education. Those are also spaces that we felt were, um, very important through the programming process. In addition, a commercial kitchen that could provide meal services to the residents of the shelter site, as well as serve as, um, potential catering space for if there was a catering of a larger gathering or event at the site. And then drop-in childcare is another thing that was mentioned. Again, if I, if we go back and imagine entering a social service center as a family with children and needing to go have some pretty deep conversations with social workers and case managers, those are often things that you don't want your children to be sitting, sitting next to you while you're discussing it. So having drop-in childcare spaces identified as a very, um, a much-needed thing. So this is probably, um, something that a lot of folks have been kind of eager to hear about is the location. Um, and there's been a few locations that have probably run through the rumor mill. Um, some of them are possibly even being worked on. We landed on, um, this two-point-six acres of land, um, off of Seventh Street, so twenty-five oh five West Seventh Street. Um, it's a vacant piece of land. We're very, very fortunate that, um, a community member donated this property to Mid-Columbia Community Action. Um, and it's been heated over to us. It's a great site, um, large, um, has the ability to meet really all the needs that we have for the site. So, um, that is the site we've been working on. Um, we've already been doing some sort of background pre-development work on that site, and we do have a, a pre-planning meeting set up with, um, with Alice and the planning department, um, coming here, coming up here soon. Here is a, um, a site plan with a rendering of, um, our design on the project. I will note that there is one thing you don't see here, and that is that beyond, um, sort of if you went to the top of your screen here, there is actually another acre of vacant land that will be left there, that we are maintaining flexibility with it in anticipation that we will expand or even create affordable housing opportunities on the site. So, um, we could bring affordable housing there that would have all the services ready right there on the site. But if I, um, if I sort of start from the, uh, West Seventh Street side there, you have, um, obviously the Navigation Center building. You have parking there. We wanted to make sure there was plenty of parking both for staff as well as some parking spots for folks who are access in the shelters. Um, I know that's come up repeatedly, um, as a need for shelter clients. Um, it's definitely a need that we've, it's been difficult to address at our current location, and this location will help us address parking. We also have built-in bike, um, bike spaces for folks here. The building in size is close to fourteen thousand square feet. Um, it's pretty large, but I will note that, again, we have multiple agencies that are going to be under one roof, so totally necessary to have multiple agencies in there. And as I mentioned before, um, those top five needs that we identified in the programming process, we anticipate meeting in the building itself. So having a childcare, um, space that would be right to the left as you walk into the Navigation Center, also having a commercial kitchen and community meeting space, um, will all be tied in as well. Sort of the backside of the building opens up to a community garden space, which creates a barrier between the actual shelter and the Navigation Center. We felt it was important to have a barrier, um, for not putting folks on display because they are living there. We want to make sure they're able to maintain some privacy. So we have some community gardens, which is gonna be a great opportunity, I think, for the community to get involved in this project. Um, in addition, B on the backside is our, um, our mobile shower truck, which we will station here as a restroom facility on the site. It has three uh, restrooms, which are shower, uh, three shower bathroom stalls, um, and one ADA unit that can be used for somebody with a wheelchair. Um, and this is, on the backside is where our, um, our shelters would be. Back beyond, again, it's gonna be open space. As we anticipate having, um, a future where there is affordable housing on this property, should we be able to successfully get funding, which I am always confident in. Um, we will maintain the backside so it can be used in some ways for like walking paths and folks have a peaceful area to, um, take a break, get away, both for staff and for shelter clients. We all need places where we can get away and take a breather sometimes. So, um, those are sort of the main things that I wanted to make sure and mention as incorporated into the building. Um, but the design was very intentional to ensure that there is collaboration amongst the many community partners that'll be in here, and that there is an open feel for the folks who are accessing the services, again, a trauma-informed design. And also, um, I will note that there is a computer lab and job training center that will be going into the site as well. So that is a critical component in order for us to help address the, the employment and the housing needs of folks who will be staying in the shelter site and folks who will be accessing the Navigation Center. I think, um, folks know, and if they don't, I'll let you know that if, um, every, every person who goes, comes and stays in our shelter site is required to enter a housing case management plan, and our housing team and shelter teams meet every Wednesday afternoon to case conference all of the folks living at the shelter. So they're talking about how are they gonna meet the needs of those individuals staying in the shelter, um, in order to help them get into permanent housing. And sometimes those needs go beyond housing, and we're connecting them with health services or behavioral health services in conjunction with the partners that I've already mentioned. Here is a few examples. I'm not gonna linger here too long. Uh, especially because the quality of the pictures is not great. I encourage you, if you're interested in seeing more about Bremic's work in the region, um, going on to the Bremic website and taking a look at their projects. They're beautiful projects. They do a great job, um, on design. I want to, I wanted to make sure that this project was reflective of where we are going as a community and make sure that it seamlessly fits into the community. We're, we're not wanting to create, um, you know, additional, or any blight at all in, in the community. We want to create something that is visually appealing, comfortable, and the community can really get on board with. So now comes the, the best part, um, the cost part. So, um, as we've worked through this process, we've been able to raise, and this has gone up, um, actually fifty thousand dollars in the last week since I submitted this presentation, but, um, we're at two-point-eight million, um, in resources that we've been able to get so far. And, um, we are estimating that our costs for completion are gonna be at five-point-eight million. Uh, we do have multiple avenues to get to five-point-eight million, um, and we are working through all of those. Of course, there's trade-offs, um, for each of those as we look at them. So we're trying to assess which funding source is gonna be the most compatible with the project. Um, we want to maintain the, the project's individuality as much as possible, um, and not compromise on that. So, um, that is why we're, we're really taking a look at the multiple funding streams that are available for this. Again, we started out with a one point five million from the Oregon Legislature. You all had, um, dedicated five hundred thousand sort of pending me coming to you and showing you that I'm for real, and we have a project that we're working on. Um, we also received some funding from the Oregon Health Authority as a planning grant. That Oregon Health Authority planning grant opens the door for over a hundred million dollars in resources from the Oregon Health Authority. Um, our partner, the Oregon Human Development Corporation, is also contributing four hundred thousand dollars. And then we are planning to convert the existing equity in our offices and some real estate equity that we, um, have also banked. So, um, those are some of the resources. Those are all the resources right now that are, um, going into the project. We are also talking with Business Oregon about the potential for utilizing CDBG funding in this project. Um, it's a very viable resource. Um, those of you who've worked with CDBG know it's a very complicated resource. Um, and there's lots of strings attached, nothing that we, um, we can't get around, but, um, it is a viable source, and Business Oregon is very interested in the project. So these, again, are the other potentials that I mentioned. Um, there's a few others on this list that I'm not mentioning quite yet right now. Um, Oregon Housing and Community Services is also gonna be putting out an additional five hundred thousand dollars that are dedicated towards navigation centers. We are targeting that resource to go towards operating support, um, for the first few years of the Navigation Center operations. With that, and I'm happy to answer any questions that folks have, um, or to go back on any slides, if anybody would like me to go over any of them again.
Thank you, Kenny. Does anybody have any questions or comments at this point in the council?
Can we unshare the screen so we can see each other?
Thank you.
I, I have a question.
Yeah, Counselor Runyon.
And I know it's way early in the process, and you don't have, you know, binding agreements. We have a few that are very likely to go into this facility. How will that work out? Will it be a rent situation for those agencies? Some of them own their own buildings now. Um, you know, what, what's the draw to bring them to, uh, be there other than all being together, which is, is a big one? But there's some financial planning to be done as well.
Yeah, great question, Council Runyon. So first of all, not every agency on that list is, is picking up all their stuff and moving their shop to this. They're going to be co-locating some of their staff that has a strong connection to the work that we're doing and the clients that we're serving. So Center for Living will still have its building. There are some of, some of the agencies on the list do intend to move their operations to this site. As far as an agreement goes, I have every intention of making this a debt-free project. And the contribution from partners would likely be an operating contribution on an ongoing basis where we're all sharing together in the ongoing operations and maintenance of the project.
Thank you.
Any other questions by the city council? Councilor Long?
Yeah, so Mr. LaPointe, I was wondering, have you asked other places like Hudriver, the city, the county, Wasco County, Warm Springs, even South County to chip in? Because so far I only see the DOWS as a government agency, and I know that clients come from all over those areas here because we are the main service point and we are the main shelter.
So, Councilor Long Curtis, thanks for the question. This is my first roadshow stop. So you all got the chance to be the first. I was, I've been waiting to come to a council meeting till I had more details, to be fair to you and, and fair to myself, so I don't get hammered by questions I don't have the answers to. I wanted to make sure that I had a site rendering so you could envision what the project might look like, as well as details on our general contractor and not just the concepts that was in my head. So next stop is the Wasco County Commission Meeting on Wednesday, and I'm also talking to the other communities in the region, but you, you all were the first stop.
Okay, that's great. I just know that, that I had people coming from all of those areas and so, and Sherman County too, so.
Any other questions for Mr. LaPointe from the council? How about the audience? Does anybody in the audience have a question? If you do, please make yourself known and raise your hand. Okay. I did have one sort of a question. It's, I've noticed that I've been mayor since January of two thousand and nineteen, and it just seems that Mid-Columbia Community Action has really increased the number of services and programs. Whether it's utility assistance, weatherization, the shelter programs you've mentioned, housing assistance, veteran services, the amount of money that's been brought into this community. Is it fair to say that there's been a vast increase in all those activities and monies coming in in two thousand and twenty-one as compared to, say, two thousand and nineteen and twenty?
Mayor Mays, I would say we've seen a lot of impacts from COVID-related funding. So there's been a lot of COVID-related funding. I am not shy to ask for money either. Maybe I'm shameless. I don't, I, I'm just not shy to ask for money. I, I'm not shy to ask for grants. I'm not afraid to put partnerships together to get it done. I think, you know, there's, our, our strategic plan at Mid-Columbia Community Action is titled A New Era, and we are in a new era of doing business in the community. We are taking on homelessness in a much different way. We have really high hopes and expectations of people and our community. We relay, relay those expectations into how we're providing services. We're very successful. While it's been challenging the last couple of years as we've taken this on and increased our staffing, we have a lot of hope in people, and we really feel like we can live out our mission of building a better future for our community where things look a lot different. And I know that, and I really sort of hate to say this, that Portland has become the place that everybody looks at and says, I don't want my community to look like this. And for us, it's, we don't want our community to look like that. And we, I certainly hope that, that things improve in the Portland area. We expect better, and we expect more from people because we believe that they can do well. And that comes with us wrapping services around them and us supporting them through the process and expecting more. So we're really ramping things up. I think the state recognizes that. And I'm not ashamed, again, to go to the state, to other places and say, hey, we're, we're doing the right thing. We're doing a good job. We're having an impact on people, and we believe in them. So can you give us some money?
And what, what is it? What, what was the date you actually took over as director of Mid-Columbia Community Action?
I think it was November sixteenth, twenty twenty.
Yeah. I guess you, you're not, you, you say you're not ashamed to ask for money, and I'll just make the point that you're probably too modest to take any credit for the vast improvement in services and money coming into this community. And I know, know you, working with you, that you're not the kind that's going to blow your own horn, so I'll blow it for you. I think you've done great work. And I applaud you for it. Thank you. Okay, any other questions or comments from the council? Okay, thank you, Kenny, very much for your presentation.
Thanks for having me.
Okay, item six is audience participation. During this portion of the meeting, anyone may speak on any subject which does not later appear on the agenda. Five minutes per person will be allowed. If a response by the city is requested, the speaker will be referred to the city manager for further action. The issue may appear on a future meeting agenda for city council consideration. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the city council on any subject which is not on the agenda for up to five minutes? If you do, please make yourself known and raise your hand or speak up. Anybody?
Mayor Mays, Colleen Ballinger.
Colleen Ballinger. Yes, oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see your hand raised. Go ahead, Ms. Ballinger. Please state your name and your address for the record.
My name is Colleen Ballinger. I live at ten fifteen Lincoln Street, and I've lived in the DOWS for over forty years. And even though I wasn't planning to follow Kenny, I just really want to say that I really appreciate the word partnership that he used. And it feels like the cavalry is coming. My intention tonight is to provide a more accurate understanding of the organization and the work of the St. Vincent de Paul Society in our community by sharing some frontline perspective. I also hope to clarify our relationship with the different organizations that operate out of our facilities. Until joining the St. Vincent de Paul Board this year, I was very confused about who was who and who did what and where they did it. Here's what I've learned about the workings of the different entities. Downtown on West Third Place is the St. Vincent de Paul Ministry Building. This is where St. Vincent de Paul has functioned for over thirty years, serving the poor and disadvantaged, providing showers, basic hygiene products, laundry, meals, clothing, tents, sleeping bags, blankets, and vouchers for more clothing, temporary housing, household items, propane and gas. Also operating in the ministry building are two independent organizations. Bread and Blessings is a local organization that provide, that receives private donations of money and food from which they serve breakfast Monday through Friday. A recent resource guide for the Columbia Gorge inaccurately listed them as providing gas and hotel vouchers. Community Meals, another local volunteer organization, also operates in the St. Vincent de Paul Ministry Building, serving dinner to anyone every Friday, Saturday, and Sunday year round, now including delivery of dinners to the pallet homes. Recently, when I had to call the police to dispose of live ammunition we had found in our building, the dispatcher acknowledged our location by saying, oh, you mean the Community Meals Building? In spite of the lighted sign advertising Community Meal, it is the St. Vincent de Paul Ministry Building in which Community Meals program operates. That same resource guide I mentioned earlier lists St. Vincent de Paul, together with Community Meals, serving on West Ninth Street, which is also inaccurate. To further add to the confusion, there is a St. Vinnie's thrift store on West Ninth Street that is now operated by the Lane County St. Vincent de Paul Conference. Then in the basement of the thrift store is our food pantry, another ministry of our local St. Vincent de Paul Conference, where volunteers have set up a grocery shopping experience with limited hours for any client who needs food. The food pantry is affiliated with the Oregon Food Bank. Our downtown ministry building has become equipped for many years to handle the unfortunate circumstances that happen when a family is down on their luck or a person's having a hard time making ends meet, or a crisis has happened. We also help people with obtaining ID cards, getting temporary housing in a hotel, providing food and help with rent to prevent another person on the streets. We also provide lunches, including daily delivery, to the residents at the pallet homes. In the past year, the number of people and the needs of the people we serve has increased with the growing addiction rate and more untreated mental illness. More and more of our clients are those who have fallen through the cracks of public assistance, and St. Vincent de Paul is often the net that catches them. We met the city's request to provide a place for the unhoused to sleep during the cold nights with our warming place. In our small dining room, all the tables and chairs are folded up. They are then replaced with cots and very grateful bodies. We pulled together an amazing team of paid staff and volunteers who set up, take down, and clean every single night we are open and again in the morning. The warming place is at capacity every night. After an exhausting winter, our volunteers and paid staff have experienced some burnout. Our clientele include people who are incontinent, people with draining wounds, people with scabies and lice, chronic coughs, respiratory infections, not to mention the complexities of COVID protocols. Twenty years ago, a person or family could be helped into an affordable apartment using their social security checks supplemented by a Section Eight housing voucher. Due to rising rents and unavailable affordable housing, we have no long-term solutions to offer our unhoused. Except the navigation center now gives me so much hope. Addictions are also more challenging with new street drugs. We encounter needles and syringes all over our property. With the growing numbers of people who congregate on our backlot, a few weeks ago, we found it necessary to install two porta-potties. Days later, it became apparent that they were severely overused, and we had to double that to four sanitary units with twice-weekly servicing, which costs nine hundred dollars a month. Many of the people who gather at our new outdoor covered area really need a treatment center. We are not equipped to deal with the advanced needs of debilitating mental illness. We are dealing with the chronic pain of hallucinations and the loud suffering of those who are delusional. Our clients are experiencing real emotional, soul-crushing pain. They have unmanaged diagnoses of schizophrenia, bipolar disorder, depression, paranoia, developmental delays, to name a few. When these folks are put together without coping skills to hug us in small groups outside the ministry building to survive the elements, it can become a volatile situation and a threat to the peace and safety of our neighbors. Our St. Vincent de Paul staff, volunteers, and board members often feel as helpless as our clients do. At times, we are simply overwhelmed, but we carry on to the best of our ability. Thank you very much for listening. The DOWS is a wonderful and generous community, and we are committed to working with you to preserve that fact. I will leave you with a challenge from an old Irish proverb. 'Tis in the shelter of each other that people live. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Ballinger? Thank you very much for your presentation, and I know I speak for everyone when we tell you that we appreciate your service on the St. Vincent Board of Directors. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address the city council for up to five minutes about any subject that is not on the agenda? Is Alan and Bev, is that your hand raised? I guess I... Mr. Eady, did you want to speak to the council? Or I guess maybe you, I thought you raised your hand, maybe you didn't. Anybody else? Judy Merrill, go ahead, Ms. Merrill. Wait for the live edit to unmute you, please. Please now give your name and address for the record.
Hi, yes. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. My name is Judy Merrill. I'm a retired RN, and I have lived in the DOWS for twenty-two years. My address is four hundred West Eleventh Street. I have come before city council several times in recent years, and I'm speaking again on behalf of concerned citizens regarding the lack of public restroom facilities in the downtown area. The lack of adequate facilities has now become a public health crisis. I contacted the city manager, Julie Krueger, two weeks ago, and she told me that the new restroom and the veterans' office has now been completed with an outside entrance and will open shortly. This restroom will be open to the public twenty-four seven and will be maintained by staff. This is a great step toward adequate facilities. As some of you may recall, when I first came to the city council in May of two thousand and eighteen, I had already been researching public restrooms for about two years. When our group first formed, we learned that Councilor McLaughlin had in fact been researching the possibility of a public restroom for nearly two years prior. There was positive discussion for a, of a safe, accessible, high-visibility location for the restroom. In two thousand and eighteen, and still today, I am proposing the City of the DOWS purchase and install a twenty-four-seven public restroom called the Lou, which has been successively tested and used in Portland since two thousand and eight and many other cities in the United States and Canada. We chose a specific permanently installed restroom for its proven design features. Here are a few highlights. It is constructed of stainless steel for durability and ease of cleaning. The design provides a single toilet with space to accommodate a wheelchair stroller. It has vandalism-resistant surfaces and a secure, one-way Sharps receptacle for used needles. Simplicity and durability of the design dramatically reduces the maintenance costs. Since my last visit to the city council a year ago in January two thousand and twenty-one, the need for public toilets has grown immensely. It is evident to anyone in town that the encampments and houseless populations has grown. There is also an increased need for public restrooms due to COVID shutdowns. While I was volunteering to help clean at the downtown St. Vincent de Paul Ministry Building during closed hours a few weeks ago, a man was banging on the door, begging us to let him use the restroom, begging so he would not have to defecate on the street. The ministry building unfortunately has very limited hours due to a serious shortage of volunteers, staff, and COVID concerns. I understand now that the city is budgeting several streams of public money, a great deal of money, much of which is undesignated. I am asking you to use some of those funds to install a durable restroom downtown that would be available to the public, easy to clean and maintain, is built to prevent vandalism, and that would provide an essential service to our residents, guests, and tourists. The quote at the bottom of the agenda for each city council meeting states, "By working together, we will provide services that enhance the vitality of the DOWS." This statement clearly implies that the City of the DOWS ought to provide adequate public restrooms in our downtown area. We strongly recommend that the City of the DOWS immediately budget for the Lou restroom and its installation and maintenance. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Right on time, too. Right on time, too. Any questions or comments from the City Council? Uh, Council Richardson?
Thank you. Judy, do you recall right off what that cost might be approximately for a Lou?
Um, I checked on it two weeks ago, and it is one hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars.
Okay, any ideas? Has there been any discussion that you're aware of what maintenance might run?
Um, I do have all that information in my file, and I could get that to you.
Thanks. Appreciate it.
Is that one thirty-eight a, um, for one? That's for one unit, right? Is there a discount for two?
Um, you know, several years ago, when Evan and I were talking, um, he said that that would, might be up for discussion.
And who, who would Evan, who would Evan be?
Evan is the sales manager that came and did several presentations for the City Council and also for different public meetings that we had, where there was about thirty to forty people that attended.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? On the council long?
Yeah, well, I just wanted to say that I'm supportive of this. I had actually just emailed the city manager about the possibility of including something like this in our budget. You know, we've had such a need, and it's increased exponentially, and now with COVID, not only is the need increased, but we also see fewer public restrooms available, restaurants and other places that used to let people use their bathrooms during business hours aren't even able to do that anymore. So I feel like this is really something that we need to get started on, and it certainly, it doesn't just benefit homeless people. It helps everybody shopping downtown or tourists coming off the boats or anyone really in our town looking for a restroom.
Okay, any other comments or questions? We have at least one council that's interested in getting this included in the two thousand two, two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three budget. Is there any others? It seems to me if we get a consensus of the council, we can ask the city manager to include that and have it be an item of discussion at the Budget Committee meeting in May.
I would support that.
The same, I would support it. I mean, there's a couple of other pieces besides purchase, like location and maintenance, obviously, but I would support that, Mr. Mayor.
Council Runyon?
Yeah, just as it says on our agenda, I think all of those things and some other questions that Council Richardson brought up should be presented to our city manager to review and, and come back with an ID on that, and then if it makes sense, and it sounds like it should. But that's the process to get it into the budget and whatnot, and give people an opportunity to, to put their two cents in and so forth. So that's the direction I'd like to go, is to see that go to the city manager for review and, and go from there.
My position, Mayor Mays, is, uh, my, yes, I'm unmuted. It would be to look and see how the transportation center functions and do a review. And I would agree with Council Runyon that we follow the procedure. So. Yes.
I thought I'd already been to the city manager, but go ahead, Julie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It has been to the city manager. Did not put money in the budget this year for that because we're just getting ready to open that Veterans Service Office public restroom. And so I would hesitate, if you're all nodding your head, I would hesitate to say, have me bring something back. We, we have plenty of information to give a, an estimate, and it's probably going to be around two hundred thousand, easy enough with the installation. We have to bring water and sewer to it. We have to bring electricity to it. We have to pay someone to clean it. So if I bring it back, I think we're going to miss our own budget deadline for staff because we're almost at our deadline right now for adding in projects. So let me work with staff this week, and we'll put some kind of a placeholder in. And then you, that still gives you the opportunity to have all this discussion at your budget committee meetings, but you don't have to fight for the money because it will be there if you decide that's what you want to do. Does that sound reasonable to everyone?
I appreciate your comments. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That makes good sense. Thank you.
Yeah, that would be great.
Okay. We do have our future projects line items, so what we may do, we'll take a look at it, the Finance Director and I, but what we'll do is take a look at that and see if we can pull some funds out of that, put it into a line item as a placeholder until you get through the budget process.
Thank you.
Okay, Judy, if I were you, I'd try to keep tabs on when the Budget Committee meets so that you can attend.
Okay.
If you're interested. Okay. Anything else? Anybody questions or comments? Thank you, Judy, for coming.
Thank you, everybody, for your input and your support.
Okay, item set, oh, I'm sorry. We're still on audience participation. Anybody else that would like to address the City Council for up to five minutes on anything not on the agenda? Last call. Okay, I don't see anyone. Item seven, City Managers' Report. Ms. Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor Mays. I have a few items for you tonight, but I, I think I'll be fairly quick with them. First of all, I neglected to tell you in my council report last week that we have purchased our first hybrid car for the city of the Dells, so we're making a small, Dave's, Dave's happy, I remembered. We're making a first effort on our vehicle fleet to do some green, and so the Public Works Department needed to purchase a new engineering department vehicle, and so that has been purchased and it's in use now. Good job, Dave. The second item, I believe I did mention to you in my report last week that we'd like to use thirteen thousand two hundred dollars of our safety line item funds to purchase some ballistic vests for the police department, as we realize several of them have expired. And while that's within my budget authority to do, the City Council set up that line item that they would make all those approvals, so I would ask for a motion or consensus tonight to spend that thirteen thousand two hundred dollars.
Anybody want to make the motion, or any, have questions of the city manager regarding that particular issue?
Council Runyon, I move to go ahead.
Thank you.
And I'll second, McGlaughlin will second.
It's been moved by Council Runyon and seconded by Council McGlaughlin to authorize the thirteen thousand dollars for the vests for the police department. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye, McGlaughlin.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Anything else, Ms. Kruger?
One last item. As you're all aware, the Waldogs Murals Fest is coming to the Dells this year. We have, the city has been very supportive of, and a partner, financial partner. We did a sponsorship for them in the current year's budget. So they are now at the point where they have to go before historic landmarks with each separate application and pay a fee. That right here, the fee is eighty-five dollars per mural. And to get approval for those before we have the festival. So I have a request from some of the members of the mural committee, or the Waldogs Committee, pardon me, to waive those fees, and there are only nine more, well, let's see, nine possible locations that will still need approval from historic landmarks. So we're asking you to waive a total of seven hundred sixty-five dollars in fees to the city to just continue being a good partner for this festival. And also just consensus would be fine from you, or if someone wants to make a motion, that would be fine, too.
Any comments or questions?
Let's waive the fees, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Want to comment?
Mr. Council McGlaughlin?
I'm in favor.
Anybody opposed? Council Runyon's okay? Okay, Council Long is shaking her head. Council Randall, you okay with it?
Yes.
You have consensus.
Thank you very much, and that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you. Item eight of City Council Reports, we'll start with Counselor Randall.
Mr. Mayor, on January twenty-sixth, the Historic Landmarks Commission met and elected Officers Bob McNary as Chair and Forrest Urkel as Vice Chair. The Commission approved two applications from the Dallas Main Street and Waldogs to paint murals. One on the south-facing alley wall at three twenty East Second Street, and the other on the east-facing wall at four oh one West Fourth Street. Two more requests for murals will be considered at the February twenty-third meeting, and one of them will be on the Dallas Police Department Building at four oh one Court Street. The Commission also reviewed and agreed upon short and long-term goals. Some of the highlights of those goals are preservation, restoration, and continued use of the Civic Auditorium, City Hall, the Dallas High School, and Colonel Wright Elementary School, and Pioneer Cemetery. On twenty, on January twenty-seventh, the Board at Q Life, the Board of Q Life met and elected Officers Lee Weinstein Chair, Dale Lepper Vice Chair, and Rod Runyon as Secretary, amended a professional services contract, received a financial report and audit, and then went into executive, executive session. No action, no action was taken resulting from that session. And this afternoon, noon, I met with Mayor Mays and Council McGlaughlin for a briefing on upcoming events and issues, and that's my report.
Thank you, Council Randall. Council McGlaughlin?
Oh, yes. Well, since the last meeting, I met with members of the Regional Airport. We had a airport meeting and a master planning gathering on Wednesday, last Wednesday, and it lasted about four hours. And tomorrow I have another meeting at the airport and urban renewal in the afternoon. I met with City Manager Julie Kruger and Mayor Mays, and today I met with Counselor Scott Randall. And I have received emails concerning visioning process that I'm going to read into the record later on, when it's the appropriate time. There's two, and one from Judy Merrill and the other from, uh, let's see, Lisa Navera.
We can address that at, when I give the staff report for that counselor. I had a comment from another counselor as well. So we have done some research, and we're going to provide you with some other information and options.
Excellent, all right. And then, let's see. I'm continuing to monitor and work with representative of the Asland family. They are the owners of the property adjoining the airport, that they're looking to promote a golf course and a large housing development in Dallasport, and that's ongoing conversations, and that's, the representative will be here on Friday. That's my report for this council session.
Thank you, Council. Council Runyon?
Uh, yes, and Tim, I think we all got those letters. I responded directly to. So myself, as far as that goes. Q Life meeting, Counselor Randall talked about the details on it. I think it was a moment or two getting my connection in, and so I got elected secretary, and will be issued a uniform, I'm sure, before long.
So take that.
Also, let's see, you're at a meeting with the Wasco County Administrative Officer regarding SIP progress, Strategic Investment Plan progress, and issues related to that and the meetings that you, Mr. Mayor, are involved in that are coming up here in the next week, week and a half. Let's see what else we had. I met with the mayor on issues that are in the background and some in the future for the city to get an ongoing understanding. Beyond that, I'm on the board, and we had a meeting of the Columbia Gorge Veterans Museum, which just thankfully is located right in City Hall on the second floor, open on Fridays from one to four, or other times by appointment at this moment. And then today, I met with the Mid-Columbia Veterans Memorial Committee, and actually Chair of that committee, and that's, I think, all of it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council Long?
Uh, yes, so I've had quite a few meetings with members of the public, some staff and City Council members. And then, one thing that I continue to be concerned about is our waste management contract. The last month, of course, they came to us and asked for a five point zero five percent increase, and, and we offered them free. But in reviewing that and getting some information from our attorney that the contract was actually, had some requirements about them turning in financial information that didn't seem that we were getting every year, and also the fact that it's a no-bid contract. I would like to see us do an audit of that. There are companies that the League of Oregon Cities lists as partners on their website, and I think it would be prudent to do that, and then possibly, depending on the outcome of that, look at changing our contract so it matches some of the other cities that have caps on rate increases or, or whatever is appropriate based on whatever we find out. Because I don't know what the audit's going to show, but I just feel like that we really don't know, and every year we vote, but we really don't have much information to make such a decision and to know whether or not it's necessary and good for our citizens. And that's my report.
Okay. Counsel Richardson?
Thank you. Good evening. I've, in the last couple of weeks, met with, or had conversations with several constituents on various things, met with several of our department heads, including yourself, Mr. Mayor, to talk about issues ranging from potholes to buildings, airport, and things coming up on future, no doubt on future agendas. On January twenty-eighth, I attended, participated in a community outreach team meeting where we discussed what various governments were doing, and also started, or continued discussion about projects we'd like to see some teamwork on. And then on the seventh, a week ago today, I met with members of the Beautification, or rather, I was invited by the Beautification Committee to participate, and they had a very fruitful discussion on some things they've been working on, including looking at street trees and what you might call street furniture, so benches, trash cans, and related items. And I think we'll be hearing more from them in the not-too-distant future. That's my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counsel. As far as my report, I did a radio interview with Mark Bailey, KACI, on January twenty-fifth. I attended the aforementioned Community Outreach Team meeting on January twenty-eighth. I made some opening remarks at the Chamber of Commerce Outstanding Citizens Award Banquet on the twenty-seventh. And I also had several meetings with citizens that may be interested in serving on city commissions and committees and boards. Okay, item nine, Consent Agenda. Items of a routine and non-controversial nature are placed on the Consent Agenda to allow the City Council to spend its time and energy on the important items and issues. Any council may request an item be pulled from the Consent Agenda and be considered separately. Items pulled from the Consent Agenda will be placed on the agenda at the end of the Action Items section. Tonight, we have two items on the Consent Agenda. One is the approval of the January twenty-fourth City Council Meeting Minutes. And the second one is a resolution concurring with my appointment of Lindsay Gema to the Urban Renewal Board of Directors. Would anybody like to make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
I'd move to approve the Consent Agenda, and good, good touch on convincing Ms. Gema to be involved. I think she will bring a very useful perspective to the board.
Thank you, Counsel. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
It's been moved by Council Richardson and, and seconded by Council Long to approve the Consent Agenda. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye, McGlaughlin.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you all very much. Item ten, Award of a Contract for the Purchase of Materials for the Dog River Pipeline Replacement Project. Mr. Public Works Director Dave Anderson, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Members of Council. We've just completed the ninety percent level of design for the project. We have submitted applications for permits to just under a half a dozen different state and federal agencies to allow the project to move forward. We are wrapping up the drafting of a contract to allow for the removal of the removal of the timber from the project corridor, so that's ready to be advertised soon. And we're currently scheduled to advertise the construction contract for the pipeline in March with an award in late April or early May. Construction for the project is scheduled to occur in two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three. But to be able to complete the project that quickly, we wanted, it was important to have the construction contractor be able to begin work as soon as possible after we award the contract this spring. And to facilitate that, the city advertised a separate contract to purchase the pipe in advance of awarding the construction contract, just the pipe that's needed for the two thousand twenty-two construction season. By ordering that pipe early, the construction contractor will be able to avoid a delay of weeks or months after the award of the construction contract and allow them to begin work shortly after award. Staff's been working with the Port of the Dells to be able to utilize a parcel of Porch Property. They've been very gracious in offering that parcel to us to store the pipe throughout this upcoming construction season. We conducted a bid opening on January twenty-eighth and received three bids for the project. The low bid from Core and Main was deemed to be responsive and was for nine hundred and fifty-one thousand eight hundred and eighty-two dollars and forty-five cents. Our current budget includes ten million five hundred thousand dollars, excuse me, in the water reserve fund for this project. The engineer's estimate, based upon our ninety percent design for the pipe purchase, was just under one point two million. So the purchase low bid price is less than the engineer's estimate and within the funds that are available for the project. With that, staff recommends that the city council move to authorize the city manager to enter it into contract number two thousand twenty-two dash zero zero two for the purchase of pipe with Gore and Main LP in an amount not to exceed nine hundred and fifty-one thousand eight hundred and eighty-two dollars and forty-five cents.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Does anybody have any questions or comments regarding this request?
I have a couple of brief ones, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Richardson.
Good evening, Dave. Two brief comments and I think a brief question. First of all, yahoo, that's great news, moving forward. Secondly, good contracting work there. I just want to call that out. It's not often we get in public, public projects, three bids of this amount, that close. So there's obviously some good communication and staff work there. Good job. And my last is just a sort of a process question. Have you worked with Core and Main before and/or if not, have you checked references on somebody like that?
So, to my knowledge, the city has not worked with Core and Main. However, the design team, Jacobs Engineering, has. And they've actually done quite a bit of work with them in the Denver area. Core and Main is a nationwide company. So we did actually check those, check some references and were pretty comfortable with the fact that Jacobs had also had quite a bit of experience with them.
That's all. Thank you. Good work. Glad to see this. That's it for me, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counsel. Anybody else? Okay, anybody in the audience have any questions for Mr. Anderson or Counsel McGlaughlin? Sorry.
No, go ahead and ask questions of the people in the audience.
Anybody, anybody have a question? Okay, go ahead, Counsel McGlaughlin.
All right. It gives me a great deal of pleasure to make this motion. I move to authorize the city manager to enter into contract number two zero two-two dash zero zero two for the purchase of pipe with Core and Main LP in an amount not to exceed nine hundred and fifty-one thousand eight hundred and eighty-two dollars and forty-five cents.
I second the motion.
It's been moved by Counsel McGlaughlin and seconded by Counsel Randall to authorize the city manager to enter into the contract for the purchase of the pipe for the Dog River Pipeline. Is there any discussion? Any more discussion?
Just what I had, I just want to add, for all of us, I have the same opinion, too. See this finally really starting to roll forward is just a great thing. Thank you, Dave Anderson and your team, and this was a big step for our community.
Thank you. I also agree. Thank you very much, David.
Anybody else? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand or.
Scream. McGlaughlin, aye.
Aye.
Let the record in the minute show an enthusiastic endorsement of the recommendation. Thank you, Mr. Anderson, very much.
Thank you.
Okay. The final item for, and this is a discussion item, is the two thousand forty visioning for the city of the Dells. Ms. Krueger, are you going to take this on?
Yes, thank you. I could say no one, none of you are more excited about that last motion than Dave Anderson. He works in his sleep right now trying to get everything done for that project. As you know, this is one of the council's top goals, is to complete the vision plan during this current fiscal year. And we had some slowdowns due to COVID and having to postpone some meetings. But our consultant Barney Inworth did a really great job. And also Alice Cannon from our planning department worked very hard on getting the word out for this community survey, and they got some excellent results. So we wanted to keep this moving. Originally, the city council wanted to kind of get this adopted by April. So when you have a new city manager come in, it will be ready. And then they can meet with the council and you can begin your goal setting for the year, a little late this year. So it was really important. However, now Counsel McGlaughlin and also I heard from Counsel Richardson this morning that they had received some concerns about maybe we're fast-tracking it too much. And so Alice reached out today to Aubrey from Barney Inworth. And she will give her presentation this evening, but she's also going to present to you an alternative plan that stretches it out just a bit. I think we can easily still get it done in May. But to alleviate the concerns about rushing, because we also don't want to do that. So I will turn it over to Aubrey where I saw her here.
Yes.
Hi, there you are. And Aubrey will give you a presentation and then the, an alternative plan. And then the city council can discuss if they accept it or not, or if they want to make some changes. So Aubrey?
Yes, so I'm Aubrey Koenig with Barney Inworth and had two things we wanted to do. Got just like ten slides, and I know this is the end of the evening, so I'll try to keep this brisk. But two things we wanted to accomplish, one is just share some of the takeaways from the initial phase of community engagement that we did after starting the visioning process in the last year. Wanted to give you some of the feedback highlights from that first phase of the process. And then look forward to what the second phase of engagement would look like, which we could lean into, you know, in the coming weeks, and then have that complete plan in the spring. So I'll dive in here. So a couple of things, wanted to share a little bit about who we heard from and what we heard. And this is, these slides were included in the council packet, too, so they're there for reference. There's also some more details and a summary report and content from the survey highlights. So we had four hundred and thirty-nine total responses. Those were collected between November eighth and December ninth. And our intent with that was to hear from as many local voices as possible. You can see from the chart that eighty-plus percent are folks who live in the Dells. Fifty-plus percent are folks who work in the Dells, and we had some who own and operate businesses, as well as those who live and play in the Dells. So kind of a nice diversity round package of. And I'll note that the November eighth, that said November twenty-third in the packet detail, that was a typo there. We launched the survey on the eighth. All right, so how did we get the word out? Have a list here of things that we did, you know, press release to local media. You've got folks on the line tonight who helped us spread that word, city webpage announcement, social media. Mayor Mays, you joined us for a video spot. You got your face out there on social media. Had a chance to do some English and Spanish social media posts. Thanks to Alice, a really robust MailChimp distribution list to help with that word out. Flyers at local businesses, more folks could use a QR code and get to the survey information. So real credit to staff and also to community partners who really helped push the word out with all these different channels. So a big thanks to everybody who lent a hand. So what did we hear? This is kind of the summary version, and then I'm going to dive into a few of the results from specific questions that we asked after this slide. But did want to start here with just some general takeaways. I don't know if there's really any surprises here for you. You know, the first one is upgrading the high school and public facilities. You heard a bit on that topic and strategies that are underway from Kenny's presentation earlier tonight. The second one was really support affordable housing opportunities and small business diversity. So, you know, a range of places to live and work for community members, both to sustain your residence now and to continue to draw and retain new residents. The third one, you know, paths, trails, river access, all of these things that connect the community and give people a way to get outside and enjoy the things they love about the area. That was a common theme. We also heard a bit on downtown and that vitality, both as a way to, kind of a centerpiece of the community, to draw residents, but also as a way to draw visitors to the community. And, you know, mixed-use development, places to gather, some of the ideas that came forward were a type of plaza. You know, the development content ranged from suggesting, you know, maybe a health food store downtown or different kinds of housing, just things to really create, you know, again, vibrancy and diversity. And the final bullet here, honoring the diverse history of this family-friendly cultural events. So food, you know, farmers' markets, music events, different ways to celebrate the history of the Dells. So I'm going to dive into some specific questions that we asked. We asked folks what they appreciate the most about the Dells, and these top three were incredibly consistent throughout our survey responses. So Columbia River, friendly hometown feeling, and unique history, those two to the top across the board. And some of the writing comments, you know, around things like climate and location, again, kind of echoed in some of the other responses that we saw. Another question we asked was ranking, how would folks rank the Dells on a scale of one, lacking some of the things that they need, to seven, having everything we need? And again, averaging of three, and that shows potential for improvement. But the good news there is that there's a lot of alignment around what that might look like. So I'll skip into the next couple of questions. So what does the Dells have now that I want more of was one question we asked folks. The themes that came forward there, restaurants and retail shops, community events and family activities, parks, paths, and trails. You're seeing the themes on the bullets on the left of the screen and then some other representative survey quotes on the right of the screen. And that, the retail shops and restaurants, again, really comes back to diversity. So we saw a range of things from some folks thinking about like a forget or a box store of some sort to just more types of, you know, shoes shops and places to get clothes, things both for residents and visitors to the community. We asked a variant of this question, which is, what do you think is missing or should be improved? And you see restaurants and retail show up again, parks, paths, and river access shows up again. And you also see the schools, interesting schools and youth activities, and then the housing opportunities come forward at this question. So I just have two slides left. So we also asked folks to get a little bit more specific and think about the next five years and the most important programs or projects that they think the city and partnership invest in to keep the community vibrant. The bullets in blue are themes from community feedback that we received through this first phase of engagement. The bold text is actually the focus areas that you guys have consistently used in past visioning processes. And it turns out that that framework is pretty reflective of the kind of input that we got this time around, too. So I won't revisit the details here, but just so you know that this is where we want to launch our next phase of engagement. It's kind of thinking about these focus areas, the top themes that came forward from the community input into those focus areas. And then launching into, look forward, a virtual community town hall and another online survey to further refine and prioritize those mission ideas. So the timeline you're seeing on the slide here is updated from what you saw in the packets. And we've, again, as Julie said, kind of stretched that out a little bit. Looking at still a late April or early May final adoption, but giving some more time for folks to hear, get the promotion and the word out about that community town hall. And then also having another survey opportunity for people to provide input. So that was my, trying to be quick at the end of the evening, run through of those contents. I'm going to stop sharing. A chance for any discussion questions.
Thank you, Aubrey. Mr. Mayor, I don't know if you want to start with the updated schedule and talk about that or first maybe have the council discuss whether they feel we're on the right track to finish it up with this type of a schedule. Is there something missing? Those kind of things.
Why don't you, if I could ask Aubrey to put that schedule back up so that everybody can see it? And it looks like it's two weeks. Is that pretty fair? An extension of, basically a two-week period?
Yes.
For example, the original virtual community town hall was originally on February twenty-third, and now we're talking about March the ninth. That's two-week period. So let's get into the schedule. What's the city council think about this delayed schedule for two weeks?
I think it's much better. But that much to give more time.
I'm much more comfortable with this, Mr. Mayor. Like this is a much more appropriate timing, in my opinion.
And as I review Lisa Navera and Judy Merrill's request that we take a look, a longer look, and this answers that. So I think we're very responsive in that. We just need to follow up with these two individuals and ask them to be a part of this vision. Yeah. Okay. Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Runyon.
No, this is much better. But I would, I would just give people heed that no matter what date you pick, there's always going to be some that miss it. So the real key is, what are we going to do to get this out to the public immediately, other than our meeting tonight, obviously? But making sure that it gets on the radio and local print internet groups to the two newspapers, et cetera, so that we get the word out. Just, it goes without saying, but needs to be said. Let's make sure that we're on this and get it out there. And I guarantee you, at the end of it, there'll be somebody saying, I didn't know anything about this. That's just part of the deal.
I think the last meeting Alice and Aubrey and I had together, we had already been developing a plan on how to get that word out, which would be similar to the tools that we used the first time, which was pretty successful. And then chatted that in the community as well. Is that, do you agree with that, Alice and Aubrey?
Yes, yes, Mayor and Counsel Runyon, yes. We have a six-hundred-name email list that we sent out the word about survey. We got a lot of responses directly immediately after the sending that email. So I feel pretty confident I would welcome you. However, I kind of pulled that thing together organically. Paula Webb and I did that together. So there may be some names that are missing. So I would welcome you to send me names and or lists of some of your community organizations that you would like to see included, and we'll make sure we get them included. I'd like to begin outreach. I talked to Aubrey today, beginning tomorrow, not tomorrow, Wednesday. The Facebook post and the email out and just start getting word out here within a day or two.
Could do a traditional press release to get it out to all the radios and newspapers.
I have a question for Aubrey.
Yeah, go ahead, Counsel Long.
Oh, thank you. Aubrey, so I see you're muted again, but what, for a town of this size and this kind of visioning process, do you have an estimated, like, goal of people we should be aiming to reach and get to participate?
We were actually pretty happy with those first results. I think, you know, we're always excited to have more. But I feel pretty good about the numbers that we got through that first survey process. Yeah, if that helps get to the question.
Yeah, just thinking for the virtual town hall for the next level. So you're looking for about the same amount? So you're looking for about the same amount of participation?
Yeah, you know, and I think what we, the, the town hall is a chance to be a little more interactive and dynamic in the conversation. But then we will launch into another survey opportunity. So those, the town hall participants could, you know, also chime in on the survey or they could become kind of, you know, hopefully ambassadors for the process and help us spread the word about the survey. It's additional community number. So the survey, second survey, I would like to see the same or better numbers on, on that. As we move into, I think that was end of March. And then, yeah, the, the town hall. The other thing we are looking at there is a chance to have some, in that virtual space, a larger group gathering, but also some discussion groups that folks could opt to join into where they could dig a little deeper into the content. And those would be potentially hosted or facilitated by, by staff or others maybe from, from this group who want to take part in those conversations around those areas.
So like virtual breakout rooms? Is that what you're thinking? Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Ms. Cannon, did I understand you sent an invitation to participate in the survey to 630 people? And is it fair to say 430 of those responded? Do I understand that correctly?
I would, Mayor, that, that sounds wonderful. I like that. I like that. That tagline, that's, that's a good messaging. However, I think that I would hazard a guess that not all 600 folks responded to the survey. We also got word out through other channels, you know, Facebook and, and other ways. I know that a few of us walked around and shared the survey with businesses and, and residents. And so we had an opportunity to connect one-on-one with folks. So, and oh, and I asked a number of people to share the post on their own personal Facebook sites as well, so that there was quite a few different ways that we, and I was on the radio twice as well. So yeah, there were quite a few ways that we have promoted it. I wouldn't say it all came from that email.
Okay, thank you. And Aubrey, I'd like to refer to page four. What we heard, key themes, starting with upgrade high school and on, were those listed in order of the number of people that mentioned that? Or is that just? Top five?
So the high school really does rise to the top. There's, they're, they're not completely one through, you know, five in terms of, of order, but high school is definitely at the top and the cultural events, I think, is, is echoed throughout, but not as much of a priority in terms of what people brought forward. So it's, it's not a complete one through five, but it's, it's close.
Okay, the public health facilities is listed with the high school.
Yeah. So. And that's maybe it feels like an odd pairing. Those are, were both identified as kind of existing, you know, public service spaces that could use some modernization and updates to better serve the community. So I would say while they're not at the same, the same physical space, the, the request there was we have these things existing in our community and we want to make sure that they're, you know, modernized and able to, to continue serving our residents.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the staff or Ms. Koenig? I think it's fair to say that the, the city council has given the staff the direction of proceeding with the process with the, with the two week extension and the, the dates. Is that, does everybody agree with that?
Yes. Thank you. I did see Judy Merrill raise her hand. I don't know if you're taking comments, questions?
I was going to get to that, but I just want to make sure the council didn't have any other questions or comments.
Okay.
Okay, I'll open it up to the members of the public. Ms. Merrill, did you have a question or a comment? You have to wait for the, wait for the, wait for the city clerk to unmute you. There you go.
Thank you. I, I didn't know if we were allowed to ask questions, but I do have, I mean, I, I'm really, this is an exciting time, I think, and I have a question regarding this survey. And I'm, I'm wondering if there is a way to really get out to the, more of the community and not just this, the 400 people that responded and the five Spanish speaking people. It sounds like, I don't know, it, it just sounds like, I'm wondering if a, if a survey could go out to everybody, a total mail out to the community like we have with different city news and such. I mean, people that are not businesses, people that don't do Facebook, people that don't do virtual, Zoom meetings, people that live in apartments that are working people. I mean, I'm just looking, trying to look at the, the whole big, our community. We have what, 15,000 people living here? And for, and then was it, was it five people, Spanish speaking people that responded? Was that it? And I'm wondering, and I'm wondering about that piece. And, and, and yet on the, on the flip side, there is a desire to have cultural events. Well, cultural events consist of people other than all of us at the Zoom meeting. And I'm just wondering how to, you know, if you're going to outreach to the whole community, the diverse community of our town and in the language that they can relate to. I mean, all of us can relate to, if I was asked to ask, be asked, what is my vision for the town? You know, I'm, I'm, but for uneducated people in regards, when I say uneducated, people that are not involved in the day, you know, issues that we're talking about tonight, how to reach them and how to talk in the language that they understand and that they, they, it's inviting to them and engages them to answer the survey. And I really, and I really commend you for doing what you're doing. I'm not, I hope I'm not sounding critical. I'm just wondering.
No, very good points. Julie, did you want to answer?
I don't really have an answer to it. I appreciate Judy's comments. I would just say that the five people that you refer to were people who responded to the survey in Spanish, because it was available in two languages. So it's very possible that a lot of the people in that other group, the 400 people, could have been responding to the cultural, but they spoke English, so they chose to fill out the English survey. So we don't know how many of that majority wanted cultural events that were or were not of a Native American or Hispanic or some other cultural opportunity.
Thank you. And one thing, I, I did not receive a survey. I actually got the survey from a friend of mine and she emailed it on to me. I don't do Facebook. I don't do social media. I don't listen to the radio. So.
Where do you get your news? Where, what do you do for local to find out what's going on locally? That might be helpful to us.
The two newspapers and talking and, and talking to friends.
Okay, thank you. That'll be helpful, I think.
Anybody else in the audience that would like to ask a question or make a comment?
Roger.
Sheila, me, you just, just hold on, hold on a second.
Okay. Thank you. Just a small suggestion. One of the ways to reach a lot of people in the city would be put an insert in your water bill.
Yeah.
And it goes to just about every homeowner. And I don't know if it would cost you to increase the postage on it, but if you put just a single sheet with this few questions on it, you may be able to get away with the postage you're already spending, no additional cost other than a little staff time. Thank you.
Great idea. Thank you.
Good idea.
Thank you, Roger. Anybody else?
No, that was the question I was waiting on. Water bill.
Okay. Anybody else?
I just have one.
Okay, go ahead.
To Roger, what he had to say, and may, maybe on that, that's a great idea. And maybe on that flyer say, please don't throw this away. Read first. Make it fun, you know, so people will read it instead of just ditching it.
Okay. Once again, I want to make sure the staff feels they have adequate direction.
Yes, we do. And we appreciate those comments. Those are both, it's really important for us to know if we want to improve the turnout of the survey, although we felt that was a, a good representation for a survey. It's helpful to know what other people are thinking and how other people receive information about their town. So we'll work to include those in our survey when we roll it out. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Thank you, Alice, and thank you, Aubrey, for your contributions to our discussion. And also Ms. Merrill and Mr. Nichols as well. Okay. Last call for anything regarding this particular subject. Okay, is there any other business come before the city council? Okay, I'm sure everybody will be rushing to take their, their loved one out for dinner or buy them an expensive present if you haven't already. Happy Valentine's Day to everybody. And I would like to adjourn this meeting as of right now. Thank you all for attending.
Record.